And then move, move the candidate interviews as, as action item be.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Um, any discussion?
Well, I was just gonna say, I wanna discuss, discuss them because we, we got the questions and, and it was about a day afterwards that it, you know, the, the agenda went out. So, I had sent in some changes and there wasn't, there wasn't time to get them into the packet, so.
Okay.
Kelsey, you're too quick.
Okay.
We've got a lot going on.
I know. Just, just a little, right?
We should have had time included in the process.
So, uh, is there any other further discussion? Hearing none, uh, yeah, roll call.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Kanter?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, any public comments for items on the agenda? Don't see anyone in the audience. Did we have anything, any? Uh, and then we'll go on to action requests for consideration approval of the questions. Go ahead.
All right, well, I'll start. I don't know if other people have questions too, but I'm gonna go in reverse order. So, starting with number fifteen. The question on budget and finance, I think that's a really important question. I think that needs to move in, out of the additional and up into the, into the questions that we ask because we know what happened two city administrators ago with respect to budget.
Is there one that, so talking about the fifteen, number fifteen, is there one that you wanna replace with?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get to that as I go through. There's a rule that I was, I'm gonna suggest taking out. I also think we should add a question, just based on Google searches, um, saying, a question to the extent of, if we did a legal search or background check, what would we find? Please describe any past lawsuits with your employers or negative newsworthy events and their outcome. Anybody?
I don't like that one.
What's that?
I don't like that one. We could do our own search on that.
Right, but I wanna hear what they have. I, I mean, you probably already did, but I wanna hear what they have to say about it.
Well, well, then you ask them.
That's what the question is for.
At, at, if time permits, in the if time permits part. Not in the first part.
Scott, you're saying?
Uh, well, it's.
It's a timeline.
It is.
But I think it is an important, I mean, it's, it's, it's public information, especially with respect to that particular candidate. I think it's an important, um, area to explore. And I don't, I guess I don't have an issue so much with the question, but I, I do think you guys should all agree upon it if, if you are gonna ask it.
I think that's an important question. I did look it up.
Is there a better way to phrase it?
What, what part of the thriving by the like?
It was a bit wordy. Like, could you, could you?
I said, if we did a loop, if we did a legal search or background check, what would we find? Please describe any past lawsuits with your employers or negative newsworthy events and their outcome.
Okay, scrap the first part of it and just ask the second part.
I was gonna say that.
I was, the opposite, probably, yeah.
Yeah, one way or the other. Take one sentence off.
Please describe any past lawsuits with your employers or negative newsworthy events and their outcome.
Yeah, keep one or the other.
I think the, the negative newsworthy events, I mean, that's kind of subjective, right?
Okay.
Yes.
Would proceed to be negative.
So, how about, how about just please describe any past lawsuits with your employers and their outcome?
Yeah, if you've been involved in any litigation through the course of your employment.
There you go.
Past litigation, okay.
In, in understanding too, that depending on the, the, the actual settlement, they may be precluded from talking about.
Right.
Also, any gaps in employment? Is that? Question? Would that be something more specific, Joyce?
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Asking about gaps in employment, is that something, what would be more a follow-up question?
It would probably be a follow-up question. Like, for example, if your number one question is to, um, have them tell you about their background and experience, you could, you probably follow up with that question.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay. A few more here. Okay, so number thirteen, I, I'm suggesting replacing it with a different question. So, number thirteen is if you're appointed city administrator, what is your plan for the first hundred and eighty days? I think that's a pretty broad question that's gonna get similar answers from, from candidates. I'd like to be a lot more specific, um, given, you know, our needs. So, it's a little, little long, but, um, what I was suggesting replacing it with is, as the new city, as, I'm sorry, as the new Lather Village City Manager, one of the first and highest priorities will be analyzing the current amount of city administration resources and comparing that against the required resources necessary to fully support the residents and all city functions. Please describe in detail the steps you would take to complete that task.
Where does, where did that task come from?
Me?
Oh, okay.
I mean, I think that's something that we all, I mean, we all, I think we all agree that the residents aren't being supported the way that we want them to, and that's a task that I think they'll, it's gonna be primary. And we haven't set their goals and objectives yet, but I think that'll be a pretty important task.
How about describe your experience in, uh, resident support? Or something, I think it.
But, but that doesn't, to me, that doesn't, what I, I mean, as, as, what, personally, what I wanna hear is, is what ideas do they have in terms of how they're gonna tackle that, that task? Because that's a pretty complicated task. So, I wanna know that they have experience doing this kind of thing.
And that's what I said. What is your experience in? Tasking, uh, just consolidating the question, is that like, I think it's a lot.
Yeah. As the new Lather Village City Manager, one of the first and highest priorities will be analyzing the current amount of city resources and comparing that against the required resources necessary to fully support the residents and all city functions.
But we don't know what the required things are, so. That's what you wanna hear, what their process will be?
Right, I wanna hear what their process will be.
Well, would that sorta go along with question fifteen, experience in budgeting and finance involved directly?
No, it has nothing to do with budgeting.
That would have, I think that that goes along with, where is that question? It was a hundred and eighty day?
Right, well, it's in number thirteen. That's what I was, I was suggesting replacing number thirteen with.
Yeah. Okay, can it be, um, can it be a addition to number thirteen?
How about something, like, how, how would you go about? Please describe how you would go about determining that we have the adequate, adequate resources to address resident and city needs.
And within the first hundred and eighty days?
Sure. Sure.
No, I'm just saying, to, to just kinda, um, have this question just kind of be.
Get rid of the hundred and eighty days, replace it with what you said?
That's what I, that's what I was suggesting.
Right.
What I just said last time or the original, the original longer question?
What you just said now.
Okay. So, let me, so what did I just say?
I have no idea. It's too long. And it's Friday.
So, how, what? Give me one second.
Is the candidate here, Joyce?
Yes.
Yes, he's downstairs.
I let him know we're running a little behind him. We're still waiting on a council person, so.
Okay.
He's, he knows.
Thank you.
All right.
Could you reread it? Why don't you write it?
Yeah. Okay. Um, what steps would you take to ensure there are enough city resources to address resident and city needs?
Perfect. That's number thirteen.
But there's not a, um, to me, that's not giving you a subjective time limit, so.
In the first hundred and eighty days.
And, and that's what I'm just saying, a hundred, there's a reason why there's a date in there because you can say, well, I did do it after five years.
Won't the council set the timeline?
Well, I guess maybe it's, that just kinda gives them a sense that it's a, it's a priority. Okay, so number, I thought number five and number six were, I had two, two, two issues with those. Number five and number six are very similar. And they both kinda telegraph the fact that they're walking into a strife environment. So, I was thinking, um, I'm sorry, number four or number five?
It's five.
I'm sorry, five and six, five and six. So, I, I was gonna suggest that we remove number six and just leave number five.
I'm fine with that.
I don't even know what an in-group and out-group is. Never heard the term.
Yeah. And then I was also gonna suggest that we remove number four, um, just because I, I, in an interview, I've never heard any candidate answer this and, let me rephrase that. Every candidate answers this question the same way and it never provides any differentiating information. It's like, oh, yeah, well, I would listen to my staff and then, you know, and then I would weigh it against what I thought and try to make the best decision. I mean, it doesn't really give any differentiating information to us, so I would suggest removing number four. Saw a couple headshakes, but, you know.
No, I said, I had already said that.
Okay.
Oh, no, I said number five, four is fine.
Yeah. Okay, well, what I did is I actually had typed up the changes so that we could copy it and have a fresh copy. And I, I wrote, I wrote in the ones, I wrote in the ones that we just modified. But does anybody have any?
Did you say get rid of number four?
Yeah, that's what we just said.
Keep five, get rid of six.
So, about you guys, do you guys have any?
I wanted to move fifteen as a priority question, not in a time permit question.
Yeah, definitely did that.
All right, well, I think we get them printed and.
Ten, I was unclear about what ten.
Oh, yeah, that was an odd question.
Different, people respond to information in different ways. Describe a situation that required you to communicate, communicate with a diverse group. How were they diverse? How did you adapt the information to the needs of the individuals?
Yeah, I know we asked that one last time.
I like that, uh, question.
You do or don't?
I do.
What's the point of it? What are you trying, what, what's, what's the answer you're trying to get?
It's not an answer that you're trying to get, it's the fact that someone's making them to, um, think on their toes of the different, aspect of communicating with different groups of people and seeing how they would, you know, how they would discuss or how would they resolve an issue when it came to having to communicate to two different, the way that people hear things are different. And that's obvious on our council, the way that we, we all hear the same thing, but we kind of internalize it and, um, come out with different thoughts behind it. And so, to me, that question is kinda like also letting you know we have the varying thought processes and outcomes and how would they communicate it to these different groups of people, different people, period.
Okay.
Most of the interviews, and just to give you background, why I like it, most of the interviews that I've sat in on lately especially, have been with that type of question.
Yeah, it goes to communication style, I think.
Well, right, but is it, is it about diversity or is it about communicating, communication?
Yeah, there might, there might be a.
It's a, it's a smidgen of both, I would just, would say.
Okay.
Diversity in thought, not anything else in thought.
How about, would, would, would you feel better if we said, uh, required to communicate with a group, uh, with, with a group with, who has different views or something like that? Instead of diversity, does diverse, is diverse throwing you off?
No, no, it's not that. I just wasn't sure what we were trying to get at with the question.
Right, it's a broad term.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, diverse in thought, diverse in opinion, diverse in, I mean, there's a lot of ways people are diverse, sex, I mean, that, that, if we wanna narrow in, get specific, I think it should say more like, how do you adapt to two different points of view?
That's what, that's what two points of view equals diverse.
Well, then why don't we just say, how do you adapt to two different points of view?
Because one word can solve it by saying diverse.
Well, then we need to say points of view.
So, require, require you to communicate with diverse points of, of view?
Correct.
But it does say that, different people respond to information in different ways. That's two points of view. I, I think that's rhetorical and I think, for me, I'm not gonna vote for, um, changing it, so I'll just let you know that one. Because it's, it's there. Or I think we're splitting hairs at this point.
It's not split hairs, then.
All right, so Scott, do we need a motion to approve this or, or do we, can we just give it to Kelsey?
No, you should have.
We didn't approve any, we didn't approve the original one.
Right, well, that's why I was asking.
Again, I think, I mean, I think it's a, it, yeah, you should probably, it's an action item on there, just have, just have it a, a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the interview question now, as, as stated in this comment.
So, um, do you think, before we take that one, is to say we're, uh, striking number four, number six? Adding number fifteen?
Yep, adding, well, adding, I'll just give it by.
So, I'm just, for that, and then the ones that we, um, doing four, six. Remove four and six, adding fifteen, and then doing the edits for the others.
Correct.
You think it needs to be specific, Scott, or is that?
Well, sorry, say it again. Can we just make a general motion as I made it, or do you want me to make it with all, listing all the changes?
Oh, I think you can make it as you made it.
Okay.
If I may, you also added a question regarding the litigation, past litigation.
Yeah.
And who's asking the question? We don't have any process here?
Do you wanna use what we did last time? Just one person asked and then just keep rotating? I think there's fifteen questions, so we.
That's probably the easiest.
Yeah.
I guess.
And that's gonna be the actual interview question. Some adjustments of.
I think gaps in employment history can be added to one.
Which is a gap, that is a follow-up.
Okay, so you, you did the, um.
All right, follow-up to one.
You did the motion, is there a second? We're gonna get them. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion?
The clerk is copying.
You're gonna write it down?
I think Scott's gonna be the clerk.
Roll call, thank you.
Hold on.
All right, uh, council member Canes?
Yes.
Council member, Mayor Proten Kanter?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Council member Jennings?
Yes.
Council member Miller?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
So, now for the candidate interviews, we have to do a approval to appro, to approve doing the candidate interviews? Or you just start the candidate interviews? I don't understand why it's really kind of a, the way it's written is like we have to do.
No, you don't have to do it, just, you just start the interview.
That's what I thought, okay. They really should not be under action item.
Should I, do I still get them? Like, it was chit-chatting with them all the way?
Is Kelly's phone over there?
Yeah, there's a phone.
Okay, nevermind, because I was just gonna call her. Do you wanna go get them, please? Thank you.
That'll, I can, I'd be happy to do it if you'd like.
Oh, I can, I can do it.
Okay.
All right. And we can start, um, down, start from the right down? Turn, yeah, the right down.
Two sets.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah.
This is two sets, okay. All right, you'll start with the first question.
How did he know we were gonna approve this?
What did you say?
He said, how did he know we were gonna approve this?
I concur, but whatever.
I, I, I didn't, but I was just, I, it couldn't, well, we did, because I had to write in changes and there, you know, people didn't agree with, so. Just trying to be efficient.
So, we're only fitting in number fifteen, just in the same order?
Oh, no, I think it was a great idea. You did, I still said that, but it was weird that he already.
You're muted, everyone. Hi there.
Hi. So, these are the new ones?
She just handed you new ones.
I know, but they're still like. So, four is.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
They have Bruce's handwriting, right?
Yeah, she had my handwriting on some of the.
I guess it should have been additional questions if time permits should be taken out. That's where it got confusing after.
For using Bruce's handwriting, oh, Lord.
Yeah, that's scary.
Oh, Lord.
So, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, if we're just, you know. Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. How you guys doing?
Good.
Good. So, uh, thank you for coming. We appreciate that. Um, we're gonna get started and we, actually, each one of us will have a question to, uh, ask of you. Before we start, I guess we'll introduce ourselves to you and then if you can do an introduction, that would be fabulous.
Mark Canes?
Bruce Kanter, the mayor pro temp.
I'm Kelly Garrett, I'm the mayor.
Jalen Jennings, city council.
Karen Miller.
Scott Baker, city attorney.
Kelsey London, city clerk.
Nice to meet you guys. Mike Green, candidate for city administrator.
You wanna say any other interview?
Yeah, we, yeah. I guess we'll get this rolling. So, just a little bit about me. Born and raised in Michigan. I'm originally from a small town called Carroll, up in the thumb. From there, I actually went to Central Michigan University and.
Go chips.
Fire up chips.
Fire up chips.
And from there, it's classic college kid, didn't know what I really wanted to do with my life. But at the time, my dad was actually on my hometown city council and eventually served as our mayor. So, I got exposed to this line of work at a pretty young age, and from there, that's when I decided to pivot and go the local government route. Uh, at the time, I had two older sisters who were actually teachers in North Carolina, and that's when I decided to go to East Carolina University to study public administration. From there, I got to, after graduating, I got to essentially jumpstart my career by partnering with ICMA and get placed in a fellowship in a management office in North Carolina. My goal was to always come back to Michigan and actually got that opportunity and that was in Three Oaks, Michigan, where I served as their village manager for a couple years. Beautiful little tourist spot, starting to blow up on that side of the state. From there, I've been strategically taking positions to have an opportunity to sit in a chair like this today. I had that opportunity to go to Celine, where I served as their assistant city manager and community development director, along with serving a couple interns stints there as well for DPW and as their city manager. And now I'm currently the assistant city manager in St. Clair Shores, where I've been for the past two years. That's a little bit about me, and I'm sure we'll cover a lot throughout these questions, so. Ready to go?
Thank you. Want me to start?
Yes.
Are we ready? Okay. Can you briefly describe your employment history and qualifications and how those prepared you to serve as the next city administrator for the city of Lather Village? Tell us about your current position and the status of the community.
So, we touched on some of it. The biggest thing for me with my experience is I've, I've really learned the city administrator role where you have a lot of hats and your hands are a lot of activities with local government. From my time in Three Oaks, where we had only eight employees and two million dollar budget, uh, I'm out there with my DPW helping mark sidewalks, get pulled for streets. Going out to sewer lagoons with my wastewater supervisor when we're having issues, naturally meeting with the community every single day. And then, and Celine, I had the opportunity, especially focusing on community, economic, economic development, working with investors and seeing how we can bring change to our city that was desperately needed. Celine is a fantastic town, but like a lot of people, they're facing some financial issues as well with aging wastewater systems and things like that that are gonna cost millions of dollars for the next few years. Uh, and then here in St. Clair Shores, I really got to dive into the personnel side of management where I've worked a lot with hirings and personnel issues and unions and things like that. And the status of St. Clair Shores, it's doing well, but like most communities, especially in the metro region, we're realizing the cost of everything. We thought we had a good handle on it in over the past few years with inflation. We have had to pivot drastically. So, over the next few months and while we get out of this construction season into our planning season, we're gonna have to do some budget adjustments, do some planning adjustments. But we think we have a good handle on what's coming before us, but we know it's gonna be a challenge.
Thank you.
Yeah, so what, what's your philosophy regarding community engagement and keeping residents informed regarding critical issues related to the committee? If you could provide some examples of how you've done it, that'd be great.
Community engagement, it's, it's really a blend of science and art. Uh, throughout my experience, uh, whether my hands-on experience or the classes I've attended, I found really there's five really good ways to handle community engagement. Naturally, first is just informing the public. This is keeping your website updated, utilizing social media. If you have a construction project going on, it's sending out those mailers, those folks to, that are getting, directly impact them, that include dates, telephone numbers, just so we're not giving those blanket phone calls to city hall, trying to get in front of some of the issues. Uh, next, it's, it's consulting, consulting your, your stakeholders. So, this really thinks of master plan or if we're redoing a park, we can present some ideas and get their feedback. What are your thoughts? What do you guys see? Is there something we're missing? What can we do different? Next, essentially involve them. I see this a lot with workshops or during master planning, we're having these town halls and we're really involving them in the process to get their feedback and have some say in what we're doing. And then naturally, we try to collaborate as much as possible, whether this is creating a new advisory committee and working with these groups to actually help solve the problem. And one of the biggest ones I've found that works is actually empowering groups. If we have a special interest group in town, it's, let's create a task force, let's get them involved, let's use their passion and their skill set to move the community forward. So, those are kind of the biggest five ways I found community engagement works.
Can I follow up?
Do you have a follow up on that? You have to, so, um, actually, we're supposed to be going by the questions because then you have to remember it for the next person also, because they have to be all fair questions.
Okay. That's not, down in the past, what's up?
No, that's not how we did. We always had it where the questions were written out. So, my question is, do you have?
I'm talking about here, I'm talking about other interview situations.
So, can I, um, go to you because I'm just remembering that the fact that all these questions have to be same and fair to everybody that comes to interview, so that's what I'm asking.
Right, the questions, uh, the primary questions should be consistent. You may have a follow-up question related to the, um, original question, if you're the follow-up.
And you just have to write it down to make sure that the.
Do I, do I have to wait till the end to have, ask the follow-up or no?
You, I guess it's really up to the body, whether you wanna wait until the end or if you wanna ask the question, the follow-up question right after the question. You can do it that way.
Okay. This, I, if you could write it down to make sure the next person gets it too.
Okay. I saw that in, um, St. Clair Shores, you have a social district.
Yep.
And you said that, um, it was a great community building activity. Now, we don't have many bars or restaurants, well, any bars here. So, you know, to have that concept implemented here probably wouldn't be a good fit at this point, but what other, uh, activities have you done to, to build community?
The biggest thing, I, I am lucky enough in St. Clair Shores where we have an active parks and rec department. Uh, that's probably our biggest community building function, as they also, similar how you have a DDA here, we just started ours in St. Clair Shores, so they're not to the level where you guys are yet. But they are essentially our community engagement and event arm of the city. So, working with our parks and rec director, we're trying to plan events. plan events for the next year that can engage the community throughout the year. Naturally, we're in Michigan, you have to play with the seasons and lucky enough, we have the lake, but that also limits a lot of our parks during that time of year because you don't want to be out there. So it, it is, it's a lot of planning, but it's mainly through our parks and rec and our events that we do.
Thank you.
What is your view on equity versus equality in your role as city administrator? What steps will you take to ensure both are a priority within your administration?
That's a good one. Equality, that, to me, that's the golden rule. You treat everyone as you want to be treated, which means you treat everyone equally and fair. Uh, that means everyone's held to the same standards, they're following the same rules, they receive the same reprimands if needed. Then equality on the high end, we're, we're striving to identify those specific requirements that people may need and tailor results to them. And as for implementing a mess city manager, I think of it kind of two ways. Internally for staff, we're potentially diversifying our interview panel. We've, uh, say we have city treasurer out for interview, it doesn't need to be me and another treasury staff. Me and police chief are bringing on our outside auditors and accountants, trying to do things like that. Or it's reviewing our policies to make sure there's no exclusionary language within those things. And then as for the public, maybe it's kind of regulating back to that community engagement side. If we're trying to promote equality and equity, it's maybe we create a DEI task force or committee or create a human rights commission to help foster those ideas or foster those education opportunities and events that can really promote this within our community.
Thank you.
Sometimes there is strife in the workplace, which creates a toxic environment that is clearly unproductive. As our city administrator, how have you, or how have you addressed this type of situation in the past as a city administrator?
As a city administrator, when, when there's strife in the workplace, the first thing you have to do is look at yourself. You, you play a pivotal role in this and you really have to lead by example. So this means, uh, having that positive energy every single time you come to the office. You have to make sure you enhance that communication and communicate effectively with not just your department heads, but with all your staff. And you really have to naturally find the city's values and really uphold them and try to instill those into your staff. Now, naturally, that's never easy. It's always easy to say that we're going to do these things, but working with your staff to try to identify the strife. One, you have to find out what's going on. You, you have to find that information out. And then you have to enhance and work on that communication to see if we can even find a solution. And then from there, if a solution can't be found despite the communication, maybe it's time we bring in an outside party. Maybe it's bringing, we bringing in a consultant to help us with this situation. Because if there's strife in the workforce, naturally productivity is going to go way down. And naturally, we don't want that, that, this line of work at all as we're trying to be here to serve the public.
Can I, when you do things like that, how do you then check to see if those things are effective?
That's where that communication comes into play. And that, that's kind of where we always hear managers say we have an open door policy, come communicate. It's, it's one thing to have your open door and always hoping people come to you and report things. For me, it's actually being, about being out with my staff and going to talk with them. If we have an issue and we think we solve it and everyone agrees in person, I will need to personally come and follow up in a couple of days and have that tough conversation again. Be like, hey, is this working? Do we need to make any adjustments based on our solution we thought we had? So it is that, just that constant follow-up you have to have.
Uh, how much do you know about the city of Lathir Village, its strengths and challenges?
So I, I am lucky enough where over the past few years, I have had close friends actually move to the city. So I've had some young families come here, they moved from the Clausens, the Roy Logues, they wanted a bigger yard, they're starting a family. So I've had the opportunity to come here and see the beautiful neighborhoods, see the streets get updated. And to me, that, that was one of the qualifying factors that when I decided to apply for this job, my friends moved here, they like it, they're happy here. That means I could potentially like it here and would hopefully like working here. Uh, and talking with them and doing my research and watching council meetings and reaching out stakeholders and reviewing, actually, all the policies you've updated over the past few years. The biggest strengths I saw was naturally the people. You guys have great people in the community, you seem to have fantastic volunteer base, and everyone seems to have a great passion for the community. Along with that, seeing you have updated all your plans and one of the biggest things I saw, even though it's been 10 years, when you updated your zoning ordinance, it's always a big task. But seeing the opportunity that is in front of Lathir Village, you don't see that with a lot of communities that have actually taken that initiative to make sure everything's ready to go. But even though that does lead into the challenges, naturally, we know the city's built out. So with these opportunities, it's, it's challenge. We have to find that right partner, that right investor to come to the community and help make these changes come fruition. Naturally, limited revenue growth, we don't have it built out heavily. It, it's tough with infrastructure costs naturally drastically growing up. Unless we issue new millages, which no one ever wants to do, we have to get creative in how we're going to move and tackle on these projects we want to. And then naturally, aging infrastructure, I know over the past few years, you guys have done, have done amazing work and a lot of work. There's still more to do, but I think you have a great foundation with at least acknowledging these issues that we can really move this forward.
Yeah, okay. So that's the challenges that you see is the aging infrastructure, any, anything?
Yeah, aging, aging infrastructure, uh, built out city with finances.
Thank you. Okay, please provide detailed examples to illustrate your management style and how you work with your staff and members of council.
So I would describe my management style as empowering. And what I mean by that is I'm always looking to try to get the best out of my staff. I'm looking to put them in situations that challenge them, but also give them opportunities to grow. So for example, one of the best examples I can probably think of is when I was in Celine, I had a, um, what was his official type, my billing official. He wanted to take on a new project with our community. Uh, for us, it was doing essentially rental inspections. Yeah, sure. I always know that's a hot topic and it was a hot topic in Celine as well, but he thought that would be the benefit for the community. So as his direct supervisor, I empowered him to start to take on that challenge, do the research, do the legwork, figure out what we're going to need as a community, take on this challenge, and then present it to me. And if it makes sense, I will help you and do everything I can to present it to council and pitch it. Eventually, we went through all that and our city council did adopt rental inspection ordinance. And naturally, it's had mixed reviews, of course, but it's, it's giving them the ability to take on those challenges that they, they see. So empowering and trying to get my staff is probably my best way to describe my leadership style.
All right, can you describe a major accomplishment that you were directly involved in with your current or most recent position?
So probably the thing I'm most proud of in St. Clair Shores, it's when I arrived, the city manager that hired me immediately announced he was going to retire. So I showed up in January, we had a budget finalized and we had four outstanding union contracts that are set to expire at the end of June. So for me, the proudest accomplishment was during that short window, being able to submit a balanced budget to city council to get passed and working with all the unions to ratify four outstanding contracts. And for those that have never dealt with a union, it's, one, it's always very interesting to begin with, let alone having someone that's brand new to the city, trying to build those relationships in a very short window to have them even have conversations with you. And then looking back, probably the most creative thing I'm most proud of in Celine was a development project we did. Uh, partnering with a private investor, we took an awkwardly shaped industrial property, worked through planning commission, city council to get it rezoned multifamily, and eventually got a final site plan approval for forty-six unit development. It was an incredible challenge because naturally, this would be right in the midst of COVID, we were still under an old master plan that had a future land use plan of designating this as an office space. So trying to convince my planning commission, city council that we know offices are going to kind of come down over the next few years. We know Celine, we needed a diverse housing stock. So that was probably one of the, my most proud accomplishments there in Celine.
So with the, with the St. Clair Shores example, so were you, you were the interim city, city manager when you left? Yeah, okay. So, so you came in, you were the interim city manager.
I came in as assistant. He was there about two months and then I became interim.
Right, okay. Excellent, thanks.
Different people respond to information in different ways. Describe a situation that required you to communicate with a diverse group. How were they diverse? How did you adapt the information to the needs of the individuals?
Probably one of the most diverse groups I've worked with was when I was in Celine. Um, one of the toughest tasks I did there, we ended up adopting marijuana ordinances. So when we kicked off that process and after our task force already had kind of their general recommendation, it was my task to work with a diverse group from everyone from school officials to public safety to folks that wanted to invest in our community, open up businesses, to the mom and dads that own houses in the neighborhood and have kids in the school. So we essentially formed this group where I presented all these options of what we could do or what could be the potential if we move forward. So the way I handled those presentations, where I always tried to keep them brief and just straightforward. Tried to keep any biases I had out of it and stick to the facts. And the biggest thing I learned while doing those presentations was to ask a lot of questions. I can provide data, I can provide general, generalities of zoning and policy, but at the end of the day, a lot of people are in this line of work every single day, so it might go over their head. And they might be afraid to ask the questions unless prompted. So that's something I learned is just always try to get consistent feedback throughout it. And then always give them a different avenue to meet and discuss. There's some people that take in information different ways. I know I'm a person that can sit in a lecture and take in information where there's other people that might have to have that one-on-one conversation or they just might need a fact sheet to read over multiple times. So working with these groups, I've learned that having different avenues to learn, taking your time, being straightforward and being brief seem to be the best way to go about it.
Thank you.
Can you share an example of a decision you made upholding policy or regulation that you knew would be unpopular with your superiors in the organization? Describe the decision you made to make, you had to make and what you had to do to prepare for any fallout.
Probably the policy that I enacted, the ordinance I enacted that had most pullback was when I was in Three Oaks. So naturally, through a small community, big tourist area, we handled our own water and wastewater and wastewater treatment. Uh, one of our largest draws to our city, it was a distillery. But naturally, a distillery, absolutely beautiful, great restaurant, great event space, but they have industrial waste that comes along with that. As a small community with a lagoon system, it did not handle it at all. So at one point, I got a report from the state based on the strength of their discharge into our system and it was fifty, yeah, it's fifty times greater than our limits, our ordinance. Working with our superintendent, I immediately had to give a letter to the distillery, essentially rejecting their waste and saying if they go back in, they get fined. Naturally, that did not go over well at all as, actually being the largest draw, one of the biggest taxpayers, biggest water user. The, the way we had to handle that internally was naturally phone calls to every single council member. Letting them, first letting them know right before the letter goes out. Because as soon as we got the information from the state, that letter was going out the next day. So it's at least informing all of council. Naturally, we know they weren't going to be happy, but it was in the best interest, at least in the staff's opinion, the best interest long-term for the village. And then naturally, besides just letting council know, it's immediately started becoming fact-finding. Get all the information we possibly could, get it into a single document so everyone could have it. Because probably similar to here, but in Three Oaks, being a town of sixteen, eighteen hundred, as soon as one person finds out, the entire community knows. So we're trying to do everything we can to get ahead of that. So the more information we can get out there, the better. Naturally, that could only do so much. Our next council meeting, we actually had to move from our normal village hall to the school to fit all the people that were going to come. But it was at that point where at least council had all the facts in front of them, why we got to this situation, and then we could start handling it from there on. It, it took a little while, but we did find, end up coming to a common ground with the distillery and they ended up finding a great solution that actually helped them in the long run too. So then everyone ended up being happy. But for that month or two period, it was rough.
Next, um, describe a time when you failed in a leadership role and the lessons that you learned. And did you implement any changes because of what you learned?
Three Oaks was a great learning opportunity for me, being a village manager. It's probably where I naturally, it's a big trial and error period coming out, is coming out of school and getting that first management experience. The, probably the biggest aspect I think I failed when I was leader is I didn't listen to my staff. Kind of piggybacking off the distillery situation, we were under administrative consent order for our wastewater treatment plant. We knew we were going to have to do upgrades no matter what. So working with our engineers, we started game planning what our solutions were going to be in long-term. At the engineer's recommendation, we decided to try to pilot program that's never been tried in the state of Michigan. So we're like, let's give it a shot. Our superintendent warned us beforehand, don't do it, it's not going to work. Naturally, we had to, for those that don't know how lagoons work, we only discharge twice a year, so we kind of have to play the game with the seasons. We tried this pilot program with the goal of having to utilize it the three months before our spring discharge and hope it was going to help make our water clean enough to discharge in the creek. Unfortunately, we got it onsite, even after superintendent recommended against it. Council ended up approving it based on engineer's recommendation and me believing the engineer. As soon as equipment got on site, worked for about a week and then failed. It failed for three straight months. We didn't get it working until after our spring discharge. So for us, for me, the learning from that, the biggest thing is listen to your staff. Their subject matter experts for a reason. Consultants are great. Sometimes they're only great in theory. So yeah, trust and verify what they're saying and utilize that staff. And the other lesson I learned, if something's not working, don't be afraid to let everyone know and pull the plug. If we would have, if we would have pulled the plug, could have saved the village some money, moved on and tried something else. But at the end of the day, we ended up, ended up wasting money and that was the, the worst thing to eat.
Oh, I get to read your writing.
If you can, just let me know if you need help.
In the first one hundred and eighty days, what steps would you take to ensure there are? Enough city resources to address resident and city needs?
The first thing I need to do is determine what the resident and city needs are. So based, based on timeline and hypothetical, if I come on board, come January, that's when it really kicks off for me, is working with you and working with the public to actually truly find out what our needs are. And from there, I can start looking at our current budget and our potential budget. So naturally, I'd start looking at current contracts, what are our prices for next year? Do we need them? Can they be adjusted? What are staff costs? Can those be adjusted? Whether I'm brought on or not, I would highly suggest looking at the cost split for some of your employees. So while looking at it, just looking at your treasurer, seeing it's ninety percent general fund, ten percent DDA. To me, that means they spent zero time working water, sewer and billing. Every ten percent you adjust from that probably saves general fund ten thousand dollars from wages and benefits. So it's starting to identify those little things within your finances that's going to compound and help ease stress on the village and the general fund. And then naturally, it's, when we're doing this, it's having that plan for the next year. What, what is our capital plan for the next five years? While we have a great idea for how we're going to tackle roads and starting to tackle infrastructure with this planning over the past three years, it's everything else that comes along with that. What do we need to invest in parks? What do we need to invest in our own buildings? Because that's something that's always overlooked. So it, it's really identifying those key aspects for the budget and the plan that's going to really lay the foundation for the finances for foreseeable future.
Thank you. I have a follow-up on that. How do you, uh, determine what the city needs are?
That, that comes back to community engagement. So one of the first things I would want to do come January, it's essentially have a workshop with council and the community. Let me know what you are looking for for the next year. Because the way I like to do budgeting is priority-based budgeting. So if you give me the priorities, I can build the budget off of that. If not, I'm going to work with staff and work and come up with our own priorities and hope you like it come June. But if you guys give me, say, based on the workshop, council and community, parks and rec is going to be a priority. We need to find money for that. So that's going to be a priority. That's where we start filling in the budget with our known costs of staff, contracts, and then we adjust everything from there based on the priorities.
Please describe any, any past litigation with past employers and the outcome.
No litigation with past employers.
That's what I'd like to hear.
What is your experience in the area of budget and finance? Have you been involved directly in the mechanics of budgeting, budget presentation at meetings and monitoring the budget? Please describe.
Yep. So, every, every aspect of the budget I've had hands in. Luckily, that's one of the blessings of working in a small community, especially in Three Oaks. I wrote every single line of the budget. Actually, I worked with our treasurer to help get some of the details, but the budget was mine. And having that, presentations to council, presentations to public. And then while I've moved communities, it's changed from there. When I went to Celine and especially as interim city manager, I, the budget was already passed, but it's now my job for the next six months to monitor and present quarterly reports to council. And including those quarterly reports, potential budget amendments. Why are we amending the budget so early in the year? I'm like, well, you approved a project that we originally didn't budget for. So, we're going to make some adjustments here. And then in St. Clair Shores, like I mentioned earlier, I was named interim essentially immediately come when I arrived. And that involved getting a hundred and eighteen million dollar budget approved. Luckily, in St. Clair Shores, we do have a full finance department. They help out immensely. But it was myself and our finance director that met one-on-one with every single department director. Because one of the things I like to do during the budget process internally is give ownership of the budget to staff. Because if they don't have ownership over their own individual department, how are they going to know what they can and cannot spend throughout the year? So, getting them involved early and letting them take ownership. Yes, it'll be my job to potentially cut some things from their budget as we try to get it balanced and get it presented to you. But keeping them informed of that and keeping them involved is going to be key when we look to balance the budget and present it to you.
Thank you. Budget is due in June. When would you start your process?
January.
Is that in January?
The biggest thing for me, it's that kickoff meeting with council and the public. Because like I mentioned, priority-based budgeting for me is key. And if I don't have that meeting with you until March, I could have a budget draft already done. You change the priorities, I have to change the budget. So, once I have that budget kickoff meeting, I can now start working with my staff to get those details and get you guys to draft earlier rather than later.
Why are you interested in this position and why should I be selected over other candidates for the position?
Naturally, this is personal and professional. Professional, I've, I've worked so far throughout my career to try to get in a seat like this today and help lead a community. Personally, I absolutely love small communities. Now, working in the shores, it's made me realize that I love small communities. It's something I grew up in. Having that close niche nature of the community is something I desire to work in and hopefully live in. And that's probably the biggest reason why I'm interested. Additionally, I talked about earlier, it's the absolute opportunity. Even driving through, doing the research, you see Southfield Road. You, everyone knows it needs to be fixed, but when you see that and you see all the other development that's going on in Metro Detroit, you're like, why not here? There's something here that could happen over the next few years. So, having the ability to be a part of that would be a dream come true. And then naturally, set me apart, I, it's, it's always tough. There's reason finalists are here for a reason. We all bring something special to the table. The thing I think that sets me apart, it's I've had the experience in almost every aspect of local government that most people don't in this short window of time. While it's a blessing and curse that I've been named interim for DPW, interim city manager, multiple communities and things like that. Without those chances that those communities gave me, I would not have learned as much as I do now. When I was in Celine, named interim DPW director, I had no idea how much salt we had to buy. Having those conversations with my foreman is absolutely wild in the wintertime. But it's those experiences like that that I can bring to the table that I don't think most people can.
I have a follow-up on that. You were a finalist in Northville and in Rochester. Latherton Village is pretty different from either of those places. What, I mean, you touched on it a little bit about, you know, what's attractive about Latherton Village, but can you expand upon why, why, you know, why you would want to be here?
Yeah, like I said, and you caught it, Northville and Rochester, they're great communities. It would have been great to be there as well. But while those opportunities that didn't work out, it didn't shut me down from looking at other communities that I think have opportunity. Like Northville, everyone knows Northville right now, beautiful downtown. One of the biggest things that drew me there wasn't even their current town, is the opportunity they have with their redevelopment of the Northville Downs. That's what attracted me there. And having that kind of community development, economic development background, I came from Celine, that's what always interested me first in communities. So, seeing Latherton Village and the opportunity that I, that I believe lies here is what really interested me.
Thank you. Do we have time?
I would say that if you wanted to just give your closing, um, argument. Closing words?
At the end of the day, I want to thank you guys so much for letting me be here. I, I know I talk fast and try to cover a lot of information in a short window of time, but it would be an absolute honor to come work, work and serve this community. So, I just thank you again for this afternoon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next step, since I am assuming that Joyce will be in contact with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
So Karen, for the last one. Can you ask that question? Because that'll give you, that'll be even two questions for everyone. If you can do another question to be kind of like, why here?
Oh, okay, sure.
The why here kind of follows nicely or works nicely, but my question, how long does he see himself being here? You know, we've had a lot of change over.
I mean, yeah, Karen, if you're going to adjust it to even say that, that's probably.
Why here and how long?
Yeah. Do you see this as your career stop or do you see this as something you're going to?
He's very young, so it's not his career stop, but if he would stay here for a bit, that would be good.
So, and we're putting these in these for you?
No.
Oh, that one's for me?
That's for you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
This is her name? Tim. I worked in every day, every day.
It was noted.
Um, you can bring him in, but not one of our, Jalen will be back in. Oh, okay.
Wait, Jalen's applying?
Either way, it doesn't matter, I responded both. Emails I can do from my phone.
All right, if you're out and about.
I check it constantly, so. Where are the suits gone?
Thanks. It's my casual Friday.
Facebook comments are very interesting.
Will we add that to the first question that I asked?
No, because you didn't have a question, because everybody had two questions. And so, if you ask that, then you'll have two also.
That's easy to find out.
True, for you.
It's amazing.
Three.
Oh, wow, maybe I'll.
You have to do other searches, you need to do Google for your searches.
I mean, there are other things you can do, but it's amazing what you can find, just not Google.
I did see a couple links on you.
I never go on Facebook in this period. I can't like, I've never gone on Facebook in this period. I've proven from a different device.
Well, I have to say the one thing I really liked.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Tim Sadowski.
Hi, Tim.
Tim?
Hi.
How are you?
Hello, I'm good. Yes, thanks for having me.
Great, we will start off with giving introductions and then you can introduce yourself and then we'll jump right into the questions, is that okay?
That sounds great.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Barb Tenaz.
I'm Bruce Cantor, Mayor of Pontiac.
I'm Kelly Garrett, I'm a mayor.
Jalen Jennings.
Karen Neller.
Scott Baker, City Attorney.
Killed a London city car.
Scott McKee, Police Chief.
My name's Tim Sadowski. For introductions, I'm currently the Finance Director for the City of Pontiac.
Want to go right into it? Okay, here we go, Tim. Do you go by Tim or Timothy?
Tim.
Tim. Can you briefly describe your employment history and qualifications and how those prepared you to serve as the next city administrator for the city of Latherton Village? Tell us about your current position and the status of the community.
Okay. Currently, I have worked for the city of Pontiac as their Finance Director for, since April, for the last six months. The general fund budget is forty-five million dollars. So, it's quite large. That was my first task upon hiring in was preparing the annual budget and within two weeks because it was due May first. And preparing that budget was a large challenge because with the new administration and all new staff, getting all new department heads together with a total budget of seventy-five million dollars was quite a challenge. But we put it together and it was adopted with very minimal changes other than council projects. For the last two years, before that, I was the city administrator for the city of Ecorse in Wayne County and also the Finance Director, well, City Controller, Treasurer, pretty much everything for eight years in that role. So, prepared the annual budget for eight years at Ecorse. I've never had a change. I've pretty much have usually full support of the council there. Really easily adopted all of my proposals and everything was, has been pretty good in Ecorse for me over the last eight years. Also, Fraser Public Library, doing their accounting for so long now because I, when I was the Finance Director, Treasurer at the city of Fraser, Fraser Public Library was also under the city, separated. They couldn't find anybody, so they took me on. So, I think altogether, it may be seven years or so I've been doing the books in the library, either under the city or separately. That's kind of like me in a nutshell today. And I started in government when I was seventeen years old as a senior in high school doing elections for the township clerk and kind of moved my way up and getting, making more money and getting more experience. For the last twenty years, I've either been a clerk, a treasurer, a manager or all three at the same time, which is usually what happens to me. As, as roles change and people move on, the people that are left usually have to pick up those responsibilities. So, either some part I've been clerk, treasurer, manager for six months or clerk and treasurer or manager and treasurer, some kind of combination. I don't list those out because I would have like a resume that was like fifty pages long, so. I don't do that, just the basics. So, that's kind of about my history.
Okay. What's your philosophy regarding community engagement and keeping residents informed regarding critical issues related to the community? If you could give some examples, that'd be great.
So, community engagement, we definitely send out the newsletter with both tax bills, with all the updates, and we do that as a separate flyer. Obviously, today with social media, we have Facebook, all the different kinds of social media to access. We have the billboards at the entrance of the signs, entrance and city hall that light up, so anybody driving to the city can see the flashing upcoming community events or council meetings, etc. So, whether you're, live there, driving through, you get some kind of information. Let's see, it's so much today. We also have the city website that we update regularly. That, that seems to be helpful. And then we strike, we stream all of our council meetings to, to the public so they can, they can listen in to engage.
Have you been involved in any community building activities in the, in the community you've been in?
Yeah, community building, definitely. So, Ecorse, most, a lot of my experiences in the city of Ecorse. Community building has always been difficult because it was the longest city in the state of Michigan in receivership and financially distressed, the most financially distressed city in the state of Michigan. So, combined together, there was a, not a lot of community support behind the government. So, to build that, they needed to see things changing. One of the big things that happened going into Ecorse was we had over four hundred burnt-out homes. How did we get rid of that? We started buying all the tax foreclosures. The city just bought the entire list. And over eight years, we used our CDBG money and demoed them all, so they do not exist. If you drive through Ecorse, other than the most recent fires that happened in the last year, those, for community pride, getting people out, those burnt-out homes that were boarded up or the homeless were living in, that were breaking in into, all those kind of activities are gone. So, that really built up the community image. On top of that, we started a downtown development authority with the businesses to get them interactive. The DDA before had gone defunct and stopped, stopped existing just like the Brownfield Authority stopped existing all because of receivership. So, getting that up and running for community development. We also reopened the library, so people enjoy having a library. It was closed in Centwayne County and we brought that back. So, and then we opened a recreation and senior center that had been gone since probably the nineties for community engagement. So, we have things like yoga and reading books in the park and all kinds of soccer and basketball and all kinds of those programs. And that's all the stuff we did in two years.
Thank you.
What is your view on equality versus equality in your role as city administrator? What steps would you take to ensure both are priority within your administration?
Equity versus equality. So, we, first, equality, everybody in the organization get this, got the same COLA every year. Usually a three percent COLA. And so, at least they were getting some kind of pay increase to help offset inflation. Obviously, we did have those equity individuals that go above and beyond and do more and those receive bonuses pays. And I, and I think that was well-deserved. We had some code, like some code enforcement officers that wrote more than probably half the police department in tickets. So, they were eagerly desired by other communities. And so, to keep those, that individual there, we had to give equity raises. So, I think that was important to keep the strong employees in the city. Discipline is always on the other side, making sure it's fair so you don't get the grievances and making sure all the departments across and department directors are applying the rules fairly. I think that is another equity case that has helped me. I had very, very few grievances there, employee, disgruntled employees, if you want to call them. disgruntled employees, if you want to call them, there during that time for those, those kind of implementation.
Thank you.
Sometimes there is strife in the workplace which creates a toxic environment that is clearly unproductive. As our, as a City Administrator, how have you addressed this type of situation in the past?
For strife, I've had to, and disgruntled employees going around telling residents off, et cetera. I've had them, I've had, all the way from internal investigations with HR myself, all the way up to contractors from the Michigan State Police come in and do full investigations, all the way down. Just depending on the offense from discrimination all the way on to protect the city. Historically, a lot of the lawsuits in Ecorse that happened were actually discrimination lawsuits. And over the time, actually, people think, actually, the largest reverse discrimination lawsuit was one in the City of Ecorse for eight hundred thousand dollars. So, both sides, not only. And being a racially diverse community, almost fifty-fifty, trying to, trying to make sure everybody's, like I said, with the policies and treated fairly on both sides and heard. We have done everything from, you know, sit downs to training with the conference rooms to follow out investigations and terminations.
How much do you know about the City of Lathert Village, its strengths and challenges?
So, yes, I've, I've read about the City of Lathert Village. I also work in Upstate County, so not too far. I've read the strengths, obviously you have stable financials, you have nearly a balanced budget or very, very close to it. So that seems good, and the Water and Sewer Fund seems that has been straightened out with the losses and everything else. So, you seem to be making progress. I see on the other side, you have large capital, housing variety stock, a lot of the things that communities are trying to redevelop to get, grow the population and make it for people that want to come here rather than going to the next door. So I have a lot of experience with that, especially capital improvements, sidewalks. We did a sidewalk repair, replacement program where we divided the community into four districts. We put four hundred thousand dollars a year in and over the four years, we replaced anything that was two inches or over compared. And we did that within four years in a community that had never had a sidewalk replacement program. So that's like starting from scratch. Obviously, you guys are not to that point, but that's what we had to do for walkability and sidewalks. Water infrastructure, a lot of communities haven't invested. So the cost now, especially after COVID is so high, we were able to get a lot of grants, another strong point. Addressing that capital infrastructure needs rather than just going and bonding for those improvements. Especially with the ARPA dollars, Ecorse was just awarded eight million for water replacement. So that grant was in there before I left as Administrator. They just got a million dollars from the MEDC and another two hundred and fifty thousand for the road res servicing. Ecorse is the only community to get it four years in a row straight statewide. So, a lot of money that the residents would have to pay through taxes have been diverted through grants. So that's probably one of my strongest points as an administrator. In two years that I was at Ecorse as Administrator, I made the city twelve million dollars, plus the nine million dollars in the last six months. So that's over twenty million dollars in grants. So, the, the city is definitely likes that. Good return on investment.
Thank you.
Please provide detailed examples to illustrate your management style and how you work with your staff and members of council.
Management style, I'm definitely not a micromanager. I like to have the qualified department heads around their departments. And if they have issues or need guidance, to come to me. That works really well. Most of the people that work with me want to follow me. That works not so well for the community, but a lot of people enjoy working for me because very straightforward. I tend to have the accounting background. You're not going to get a runaround answer, you'll get a direct answer. They like that rather than waiting four or five months for the policy decision to go around or to get a decision where they come to me about a water main break or want to know if we have money or any kind of situation and what to do. They tend to like those, that kind of direct guidance. As a management style, I usually meet with them weekly or bi-weekly. Ecorse was about twice the size of Lathert Village, so we met citywide, weekly and every other week, department heads. So that we could address any of the supervision issues every other week and then every other week, citywide staff, anybody could come. And we talked about all the projects and what was going on. So no matter who you were in the city, you could pick up the phone, if you got a phone call and you answered the phone, you could tell them why somebody was doing something where and what the project status was, whereas most communities, the employees that answer the phone have no clue. Including me as a Finance Director. So, that's one of the largest issues I see working on the finance side is, and not as Administrator side, is that we're not really given the day-to-day information. And so we don't really know how to work with each other. And there's the discommunication and dysfunction that's created, everybody is not on the same page or at least know what direction we're headed.
Thank you.
I got lost in time. Okay, so please, yeah, please describe a major accomplishment you were directly involved with in your, your most recent decision.
The largest accomplishment in my entire career, again, was at Ecorse. They have a sixty-acre Brownfield site that has, is a former US Steel finishing, cutting facility. The large reason for the need for the development is the US Steel plant closed in twenty twenty in Revolution Detroit and all that's left is finishing in Ecorse and every month the production goes down. So, and that's pretty much all automotive driven. To offset that, we tried to create a tech base and with our Brownfield site. But nobody was interested because they could not access the site with the truck route. We have a railroad that divides the community and so you, with four rail lines. So you could be sitting at the rail lines in the industrial sector for three or four hours or longer. So that was not going to work in today's world. We had to have a direct truck route off Southfield and with the, so that was about a three-point-five million dollar project. Also, trying to get a truck route through already developed city was a problem. And so we had submitted a grant to Wayne County for their ARPA funds and asked for five million dollars for other infrastructure with the site. But they said that they would fund the road if I could commit that it was feasible, meaning I had to have access to the site within a week. I had to get fourteen property owners on one street to sell their house in one week. So, or else they would not give us the three and a half million dollars. So I convinced all fourteen of them to sell the house and even to the city in a week. And negotiated some kind of transition plans. Some of them had six months to move, et cetera, and some of them, we paid the utilities so they could walk away and find a house and et cetera, et cetera. But we literally, literally bought all fourteen houses on one side of the street in a week. Wayne County was shocked, to say the least, and we did get the three and a half million dollars from Wayne County. The state also put in a half a million dollars and that truck route is finishing up now with minor grading. So now the site can be accessed. Part of the twelve million dollars that I was able to get was for the road and Brownfield and removal of that site. Because once the water, the real issue is water revenue loss. Where, due to the decrease, they're at about twenty percent, twenty-five percent of what they were in twenty twenty when they were, had full production. So the rate shift between industrial and the residential has been quite significant. We've seen sixty-five percent rate increases. Well, the residents don't want to pay sixty-five percent rate. It's like a Highland Park situation, right? Nobody wants to pay a sixty-five percent rate increase and when they close, they'll go from sixty-five to a hundred percent rate increase. So you have to have some kind of offsetting development to decrease or redistribute the bill. So that's probably one of my largest accomplishments.
Thank you. Different people respond to information in different ways. Describe a situation that required you to communicate with a diverse group. How were they diverse? How did you adapt the information to the needs of the individuals?
I've worked, I've worked historically with diverse groups pretty much throughout my career. I think the, it has came down to trust for me. If people don't trust you, they're definitely not going to listen to you or work with you. So working with diverse groups, from, we've had everything from retirees, changing healthcare plans, bringing them in to diverse groups of employees being racially split, to we have diverse groups of different, you know, ident, sex. All kinds, every kind of diverse group we have, we have at Ecorse. From people that live in, you know, migrated from India to the whole, the whole world. So you have to be able to work with them. And I think the challenge was, we had talked about equity is working with them individually to build trust. One example is I, the code enforcement officer goes to India for his religion once a year, but he doesn't get a month's worth of vacation. So we let him use his sick and vacation time combined to go do that for the religious reasons. That's one of the things building trust with diverse groups. Another thing was going to, with the older retirees, trying to get them to go to the supplement, Medicare supplement, instead of paying the full premium, which costs the city about three times what it does as a Medicare supplement. But explaining to them, really the supplement would carry, cover most of their expenses and they really weren't losing out. And the city still paid a hundred percent of the premium was better than the city going through litigation and then, you know, maybe going to a stipend like Detroit. So that was alternative. The other part, working with diverse groups, has been union contracts. All of our union contracts were negotiated on the same day within an hour. Cannot say that today. They have had stale union contracts for four months today because the police don't trust the city anymore. So, so it's really about who you're dealing with, right? And as the representative of the city, if they don't trust and think you care or are on their behalf, aren't they just, it's going to be a brick wall and then everything, the grievances are piled up since I left and, except, and it just goes down the rabbit hole.
Thank you.
Can you share an example of a decision you made upholding policy or regulation that you knew would be unpopular with your superiors in the organization? Describe the decision you had to make and what you had to do to prepare for any fallout.
Some of the policy decisions I have are financial. Most of them was the layoffs that had to occur. I think bringing those policy decisions to the council for adoption, we actually ended up laying off eighteen city employees or contracting emergent services due to the US Steel decline in property tax revenue. So we knew that we had to make up a two and a half million dollar annual shortfall. And rather than trying to cut that all of the last year to make, to make, chip out a way over two years, I guess, the best way. So, explaining to the council why they had to do that in advance was a big policy decision and financial policy decision. They did get some better services. They brought in McKenna rather than having their own building department, which saved them about fifty percent of their building department. And instead of going to one day inspections, they now have three day inspections. So, I guess that might have went for the employees that were let go, but probably a win for the residents of the city financially. So making those, you know, giving the council that kind of policy direction for consolidation or contracts, layoffs, et cetera, was, is challenging.
Can you describe a time when you failed in a leadership role and the lessons that you learned and did you implement any changes as to what you learned?
Yes, yep. I failed lots of times in leadership roles, definitely can say so. Time I failed in the leadership role, probably at the beginning of my career, twenty years, was real young and twenty and out of college. And a lot of it was dumped on the manager to fix. So, when you take over as City Administrator, everything becomes your fault at the end of the day. And I took over a financially distressed city that literally was audited the, the year before and the Michigan Department of Treasury came in and said you were un-auditable and left. Nobody would go there, so I, that's how I got my first job at twenty years old as a City Administrator in government. And so, as, it was extremely challenging. There was a lot of turnover. A lot of politics were divided between the community due to the finances and again, water rates had to go up and things like that. Things that I have learned about today is slowing down and doing more of more backup. I would say that now when I make a decision, it is all thoroughly documented and all the reasons behind that decisions are presented rather than trying to find out or do it after the fact. It's easier to make a policy change with everybody being upfront on board at the beginning rather than at the end. So we had to go through a circle. So that's kind of what you learn in your twenties is, you know, try to avoid the circles. And try to do what's best for the residents and the council and the employees. It's, it's easier to do it upfront, I think. Rather, a lot of communities try to hide everything and they don't give the information out and people don't understand why decisions are being made and what's happening and which caused a lot of anger and residents to come to board meetings, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's probably some of, some of the things I changed.
In the first one hundred and eighty days, what steps would you take to ensure there are enough city resources to address resident and city needs?
Obviously, going through your budget and making sure where you are year-to-date with your financial reports. That is another strong point that I have doing finance for pretty much the majority of my career. Making sure that the city can pay its obligations and that the projects are budgeted. Everything is in line year-to-date. I, I walked into some communities such as my own where, where payroll hadn't been recorded for ten months and expenditures and nobody knew where we were, where they were at. I know you're not there, but things to look for, making sure that you're on track with the budget, year-to-date numbers, we, and forecasting, I see, you know, budgeting and forecasting where you're going in the future. Especially with all your capital projects that you're able to achieve your goals.
Thank you.
Please describe any past litigation with past employers and the outcome.
Past litigation with past employers, I have, as a City Administrator, and I've probably been sued numerous times. As an individual, I have only sued the City of Emlay City. I withdrew that to go to Ecorse because they would not hire me with an open lawsuit. That said, I withdrew my lawsuit against Emlay City and went to Ecorse. And then, I had my letter from the Department of Labor stating that I was discriminated against. Part of that was the former City Administrator Wayne O'Neal was forced out. I was again, replaced the City Administrator there, clerk and treasurer all at the same time. And really didn't agree with what the city was doing with water and sewer. And so they made it not really great for me to work there, but then when I left, they made it difficult for me to find a job. So to stop that, I had to sue them until they backed off and then when I found a job, dropped the lawsuit. That's the only time I sued anybody, but I've been sued as a City Administrator properly, or City, as a City Administrator, ten, twenty, thirty, I couldn't even tell, count the number of times the city, especially in Ecorse. It seems like there's a lot of them, but whistleblower lawsuits, we've represented, we've always won. Well, on the other side, I've never lost a lawsuit, does that help? So the city has never lost a lawsuit. So the city has never lost a lawsuit. So that does help. I've never been pardoned for anything that, that did not come out on the city's favor or my favor.
What is your experience in the area of budget and finance? Have you been involved directly in the mechanics of budgeting, budgeting presentations at meetings and monitoring the budget? I'm sorry. I know that, yeah.
So budgeting is one of my strong suits. One of the first things that you have to do in an organization, as I said, is review the budget and see where you're going. When I walked into E-Course in 2017, we're required by law to have a five-year forecast because we're a former receivership city. And Treasury kept on rejecting it over and over and over and over again. So I came in and did a incremental approach. Here's where we're now. Here's the trends that we think in each of these areas. Here's the revenues and how we're going to raise it. And they approved it without changes on the first try. I think that, and the deputy state treasurer, not choice, but the one at that time, went down to Detroit and then gave me congratulations on actually having a budget and a forecast that actually worked and mathematically worked out. I've done that over and over again. I said in Pontiac, I went there, I had to turn the budget out in two weeks. That was done and adopted, like I said, with very little changes. So budget preparation, preparing it. Some cities are top-down where the administrator just gives out the budget. Some are bottom-up where we work with each department on each level. They submit their request. We sit down with them. Then it's a combined draft. That is reviewed again with everybody. Cuts need to be made and submitted to the council. So I've been in communities that are both top-down and bottom-up. So either way, I'm familiar with. It's just usually how the city council or city administration has worked or the finance director, they usually kind of repeat the steps. But I'm familiar with all kinds of, we've all the way gone to zero-based budgeting when I walked in and, you know, said, "This isn't even a budget," shredded it and started over from the zero, beginning. I've even had to do that. If you get somebody in place that doesn't have any budgeting skills, like when I was at Frazier, I walked into Frazier and then had to, that's what I did. I shredded the budget and we started over again. And then said, "You have to raise your taxes if you're going to be out of money by the end of the year." That didn't go over very well. So, yeah, those, that's my budgeting history. Usually reviewing it at the beginning and seeing if you're good or if you have drastic changes.
Thank you. Does that follow up on that?
Yes.
Have you included residents in that process?
For, um, community engagement, probably not at the beginning. I've never seen a community actually do this in an engagement beginning. Usually it's during the public hearings, during the budget process. But some, some communities have council members sit on the drafts or committee members, if there's finance committee members, sit on the draft. But I've never had a community actually have the citizens partake in budget draft preparation until it was unified draft from all the departments.
And then when do you start the process usually?
Depends on the timeline. E-Course, I have to have it out April 1st. So I start in January. Pontiac has to be out May 1st. So they usually start in February. So it's usually a three or four-month prep process before. And then they have a timeline table. So a lot of communities, finance will prepare the basic template for the departments, put in the wages. Here's your current wages and taxes and benefits and everything else. And the capital outlay that's budgeted. And then if you want to add or subtract, the department's usually, but now it's added full-time employee. And then that's usually added in through the process.
Why are you interested in this position and why should you be selected over other candidates for the position?
I was interested in the position. I'm more suitable for smaller communities. And that's where my history has been in. As, I tend to have the skill set, all the operational skill set. As I said, I've been everything from treasurer to finance director, clerk, manager. So having the skill set in a smaller community allows me to help out a lot. I'm not as useful as a city administrator in a bigger community where they attend meetings. Such as now, Pontiac had been vacant for over a year. So they were eager to have somebody fill the role. So I went there to fill that role. And, but it's 65,000 people. I have 20 employees just in one division, let alone, so not really what I'm comfortable with or really suited for with my history. This also close to home and in Oakland County was another reason why I applied here. And, and then your needs, right? I pretty much completed all these needs in E-Course over the last two years. So it was a good fit where I have experience, you know, doing the housing, doing the infill. When we demolished the housing, we, instead of just leaving vacant lots, we developed the info program where we actually designed architect homes. So you could just take plans off the shelf. You didn't actually have to go buy the plans that actually fit the site plan and then go build it. So things like that, like Grand Rapids did for infill housing and things like, we took those ideas. So all the, all the one to five-year steps that you have listed, that you need done, I have accomplished.
If you were to get this position, how long would you plan to stay?
I'm trying to stay at one position now. I've got to that point in my career. Well, I stayed eight years at E-Course, but definitely long-term. I do not want to really move anymore. I'm looking for a retirement job. And I'm at the position where I need to find a retirement job where I actually walk out of. The days of working three, four, five communities have wore on me. So when I was at Flint, I ran, was some kind, I worked at five cities at one time. That's a lot. Most, most people can't do one city, let alone two, three, four, or five. So I'm trying to life balance. That was the reason why I chose this job, was trying to life balance and cut it down from five to three to one. So.
Thank you. So in closing, is there anything, final words that you would like to say?
My final words, I, I think I'm a great candidate for your goals, especially you have such a strong, you know, forecasting goal, budgeting and finance needs. And to get these projects done, you're going to have to have somebody that has a finance background, I believe. That will make it a lot easier with the background I bring, especially in finance, would make me a good city administrator and I think a good match for your community just to achieve the city's goals.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you.
All right.
Thank you.
How about that one?
Thank you.
So moving on with our, our agenda, is there anyone that wants to do public comments before we go? Public comments? No? Okay. So you take a, you have to go to the restroom for like two minutes, three minutes so we can get into deliberations.